Excuse me, the, the record for the Ashland Planning Board, this is Thursday, September 12th, 2024, and it is 7:18 PM, and we're gonna call this meeting to order. And we will begin with the Clerk's report. I will add that our Chair, Tricia Kendall, is running a few minutes late, so we're gonna take our agenda slightly out of order. And we begin, as always, with the Clerk's report.
Thank you. The Planning Board has received four correspondence from the public since the last Planning Board meeting.
Thank you, Kate. And we now will have a brief public comment. What we tend to tell the public at this point is that later on today, we have other agenda items, including the Chestnut Street project, and so if your comment is about an actual project coming later in the evening, please wait for your public comment at that time, but if there's general public comment, this would be the time. And Peter, do we have any public comment online?
Currently, we have no public comment online at this current point.
And is there any public comment in person?
Mr. Mark DeSoni is making his way to the microphone.
Thank you, Mark DeSoni, 119 Main Street, next door to Town Hall. I want to ask, I know you got currently MBTA agendas coming up. I want to ask, is the zoning content going to be the same, or does it change in the middle?
Well, the zoning content for the MBTA zoning bylaw would be overlay districts spread across, spread across the proposed districts. So it's gonna be one overlay district.
So what's in the zoning code book is gonna say what it's gonna be for this?
So what's in the zoning today will remain, and then what will be added is a MBTA overlay district.
And I also know by my email that I got that it's gonna be a public forum, hybrid public forum for this next month.
That is correct. It's not hybrid, actually, it's entirely on Zoom, and that's gonna be held next Monday, October, excuse me, September, September, yes, September 16th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. That's on the calendar, and it will appear tomorrow in the Town Manager's newsletter. But yes, thank you, Mark.
Is there any additional public comment? Okay.
Do you wanna say anything?
I don't think so. Just trying to get a feel of how things have done here. Well, I might pause.
For the record, that's how I feel every time I'm here.
Hi, Paul Flaherty, I'm from Upton, originally from Ashland, but I own a property adjacent to the 61 Waverly Street project. I just wanna make sure that everyone knows that we are not opposed to the project, because we know that housing is something that's coming, and everyone needs it. But as it's proposed right now, there's a five-story apartment building 25 feet away from an existing residential home, which seems, unfortunately, that's what the zoning is. When the zoning was changed, I was at a meeting here. I didn't want it changed, I wanted to stay residential, but the Planning Board at that time kinda talked me into it, and they said, you don't need to worry, we're never gonna let someone build a large property without having some sort of buffer. So I just would like to go on the record saying that, you know, I think that, I know that they're probably working on new changes to the development, I don't know, but we would like to have a little bit of a buffer between an existing home that's been there for 100 years, which is apartments now, so we've actually had affordable housing there for the past 40 years that I've owned it, and then my grandmother before that, so anyways, just wanted to let you know, see how things are going. I know that's not a subject that's coming up tonight, so.
The Planning Board, because we don't have it on our agenda, we can't discuss it in detail, but what I will say, I believe you're referencing the 40B project that's proposed right next door, which the Planning Board did provide public, Planning Board comment to the state, and I would certainly encourage you to reach out to Peter after tonight, and he can update you as to where that is.
Can I have a second?
Sure.
So just to make note, Paul actually came into Town Hall, and him and I have talked, and actually, I've connected with Paul, we've talked about the situation. That 40B is still up at Mass Housing, you know, along with the 1060 40B, but with that, Paul did write me an email as an abutter. I then forwarded that on to the Select Board and to Mass Housing, CCing Paul, and so I was able to connect Paul and Mass Housing. And so, just to make note of that, and make it clear for the Planning Board that Paul and I have discussed this project.
Great, and I think procedurally.
Any further news on this? Is there a more efficient way for me to find out what's going on?
You know, like, you know, right now, there is none, you know, it's still within Mass Housing's hands in their jurisdiction. I do not, I do not, I don't know what their process, I don't know their processes as well enough to say what they will and will not do. What they will do is either they're going to issue a denial to the applicant, and/or they're going to issue what's known as a eligibility, a project eligibility letter. If the project eligibility letter is then issued, then that allows the applicant to come in and file with our zoning board of appeals. Once that happens, all part, then we, the town, will have to send notification to all abutters within 300 feet and go through the processes of Mass General Law. However, like I said last time, Paul, you stay in touch with me, and I'll keep you updated, you know, on a, you know, on a weekly and monthly basis. So, you got it.
Any additional public comment? And with that, we'll close the public comment. The next item on our agenda, skipping over number four, we'll come back to Chestnut Street once our Chair is here. We're gonna move on to the MBTA zoning. Any update, Peter?
At this point, MBTA zoning, we're still working hard on it, you know, I think we have a good game plan. We had one public forum. We're gonna have a second public forum this upcoming Monday night, as Mark nice kindly promoted, at 7 o'clock on the 16th via Zoom. Hope anybody can attend. It is gonna appear in the Town Manager's weekly newsletter tomorrow, and then we're gonna kinda move on, and then we're gonna actually move, not move on, but we're gonna move to, we're gonna, I think we're gonna have a joint public meeting with the Select Board, which is on the books, to talk about this, and then we are going to hopefully congeal around the plan and then, you know, move forward and have public hearings. Right now, the Planning Board, as slated, will host a public meeting starting in October, you know, to hear the, the bylaw as proposed for Fall Town Meeting, which is, I believe, scheduled for, and excuse me for looking at my phone yet again, November 18th, I believe, it's gonna be on a Monday night at the high school.
Okay.
And so it was going to be a Wednesday, but it was moved to Monday.
I have a question on the timing. So if we have a public meeting in October, is there, and so if someone comes with a good idea that the Planning Board likes, and it's a change, or is that gonna be too late to make a change at a town meeting warrant? Because I know it cannot be done on a town meeting floor, so I just, I think.
It all is kinda, it depends on what the change is, you know, it's kind of a hypothetical.
So, but I think we have to be transparent. If it's basically we're having a public hearing, but you can't change it, I, I think we have to tell people that. If, if we, if unfortunately, the window is not gonna be able to allow changes before town meeting. It seems like informational more than.
Well, the informational will be the public, the public forums, that one we've already had, and then obviously this upcoming Monday night.
So when we get to the actual hearing, is it, is it in, it seems to me it's likely not in a window that there could be a change suggested by the public that could get acted on before town meeting.
So when we do the meeting with the Select Board on the MBTA zoning, is that a public meeting?
Yes, it's a public meeting.
And so that will be the public's opportunity, in theory, to provide comment, in theory. So as long as we maintain the MBTA on our agenda as a Planning Board, we can, in theory, address changes sooner than the October event.
And I think then that should be publicized, because that might.
Just to make sure I'm actually saying it right, because I think we're meeting with the Select Board in September.
Correct.
And that will be a public meeting where.
All of our meetings are public meetings, and we always take public, we always take public comment, and we'll take public comment at the public hearings for the MBTA zoning bylaw. However, from a procedural standpoint, when you adopt a bylaw, the Planning Board has to, has to always hold a public hearing. So that public hearing for the bylaw adoption is slated to be on October 10th.
Right.
But to, but to respond to Kate's point, what are your, are you trying to say, Kate, that if we only have one event, which is the Select Board mutual meeting with us, and then another event where the, really, we, we have a very small window to hear and actually make changes, maybe we should.
That's what I'm trying to find out, what, what is that window? And I believe if we are having our first public hearing in October, we probably could not address any substantive changes to still have it on town meeting warrant.
I would say the word substantial, yes. You know, I think for public comment, the time is now. You know, the time was, you know, from the public forum, you know, leading up to the public forum number one, having the public forum number two at, on Monday night, having a public meeting with the Select Board about this, you know, the window is now.
Will the Town Manager's newsletter make a comment about the meeting that we're having with the Select Board on the MBTA zoning? And if so, can we add something about how that's an important venue for the public to comment?
So, I.
As far as timing, I don't know, I guess I'm asking in theory.
It's been in there.
It's been in here.
It's been in the newsletter every week.
Every week, correct.
Yeah, that, like, a s- update on MBTA zoning.
Is, yes.
Does that address your concern, Kate? I'm just trying to figure out what we wanna, what, what are you asking?
As a member of the public, if I came to a hearing, I would, I would think that I would be able to influence, and that, and I believe if, in October, it will be minimal chance to influence.
So do you want more focus on the fact that the last point of influence might be
Yes.
the joint meeting with the Select Board?
I mean, I think that would be helpful to.
Does the rest of the board think that that's important to do?
I, I just don't understand what's being asked. I'm following Pete's rationale.
I think.
The public has had plenty of opportunity, and still has opportunity to come in. Thinking that you're gonna come with a great transformational idea at the last minute is not a right way to do anything. I think every, all these meetings are public, and it's been discussed, whoever's waiting should not wait.
That's kind of my feeling on it, because we also had multiple public hearings in the spring, like, we had, like, lots of chat.
Yeah, we've had two open public forums.
Between the spring deliberations and these ones, and obviously, like, there's a different iteration of it now, for sure, but that's been, there's been one public forum on it already, that's been super publicized, there's another one coming, and I think, well, again, like, the Select Board is another opportu, so I think, from where we sit today, there are two more substantive opportunities for the public to weigh in meaningfully, and I, I agree with Marcelo that, like, if, I think it's been very widely publicized that this is going, you know, something's gonna go forward at Fall Town Meeting, and so thinking that you would come in October with, like, an earth-shattering change, I think could be backwards.
To best of my knowledge, we don't actually have all the parcels picked, so I think it's what, what you consider substantive change. I mean, that's still open.
So, so.
But I think, like, talking through the options and ideas is happening at the forums and at the public meetings that exist.
Has been happening for a while.
So, so here's the, the good news. The good news is we've had lots of public hearings, or moments, we'll, we'll have a few more. It sounds like we can all take responsibility to individually let our constituents know that if they want to contribute, they should be doing that ASAP in many ways. And then the other thing I'll say is, there is always a risk that somebody will come up with a great idea, and this is not gonna pass a town meeting, and I think we all knew that and know that. And so, it's not that I'm excited about that, I think I had a lot of concerns about it, and if it happens, we're gonna have to deal with it, and hopefully not be penalized, if you will, by the state.
And my, the last thing, my last thought on it is, like, the world of options, like, the, there's, there are various permutations that are available, but like, the world of options has been pretty widely known, and like, hasn't changed a whole lot, at least, like, from when we've been talking in the spring until now, like, the pa, the last public forum, this one coming up on Monday, the Select Board meeting, we'll be talking about sort of the same stuff that was talked about, at least at the prior public forum.
Correct. It'll be in addition to the prior public forum, and how it's been kinda worked out, and what's been looked at, obviously from a number standpoint, from an acreage standpoint, from a parcel ID, you know, it's.
So could someone come up with, like, an earth-shattering permutation of that, like, potentially? But like, I, I also think, to your point about, like, I think the, the realm of, like, available options is, has been known and is out there.
I would concur. And, and also, this is info, you know, I did write up a blurb, and I put it into the Town Pages, which is actually a print, which is gonna go out early October, and so that is also going to alert everybody within the print form of a Planning Board public hearing on the 10th.
Okay. Anything else on, on this particular item? And we are now moving on to the draft checklist for application status, and Peter, I did not see, at least not in mine.
So I just left it on this, I left it on, and obviously, this is something that Kate's been working on, and so I did not put anything, there was nothing new to add. Oh, was it?
The checklist for the application status. This, this was the, this was the detailed checklist that.
You know what, I think we accidentally, may have, Alvaro may have accidentally removed it.
That's okay.
Oh, yeah, I know.
So, so I'm hoping that we don't just keep looking at its checklist when we start picking off some things.
Yes.
So that would be my cheerleader for that.
I think we should continue to keep it on the agenda, and obviously start to do some work on it, and I would be more than happy, Kate, to actually produce what I promised. I think we had a, on the sheet, I believe we have signed names, I think. Maybe we can find it?
I have a piece, I do have.
So the items that have my name on them, I'm more than happy to commit publicly to some sort of informal deadline of a draft of some kind, of a memo of some sort, if that, just so we can move this along and feel like we're actually making some kind of progress.
So, I can just, because I think it's appropriate, we were talking about, I took a rough stab of order of cue of importance, MBTA zoning, which we talked about, the tree bylaw, I think we, I got the sense that people were sort of excited, but I have not been able, I think that Sustainability Committee took, kinda for the summer anyway, and haven't heard back. So accessory dwelling units, and I believe that's on.
That's the next one.
Our agenda. I put below that accessory dwelling unit as affordable housing sub, so we don't confuse the two.
So I'm doing some research on that.
And then Airbnb short-term rental bylaw, which I think kinda, those three go together. Zoning for downtown hotels, we know who.
That's me.
The bylaw review, so there was just a lot, we, we find discrepancies or conflicts or repetitions that really take us more time in making decisions, so.
Do we know who committed to that?
Well, we never did that, so we, we should kinda.
With Deepa and Tricia not being here?
Yeah.
Since I'm.
It was Tricia, I mean, Tricia definitely said she has, like, a list in her mind of them that she wants to, like, that she knows from being, like, probably in them.
Yeah, I asked her about that, but she said she kinda just, as she gets to it, so she didn't wanna publish.
So what I, what I can do, the next meeting that we have is September 23rd, and I'll be, I will be out of the country, so I'll be missing that one, and the 26th I'm missing. So for October 10th, I can commit to having some kind of memo or notes on the three items we mentioned. A little bit of research on examples of communities that have been able to create protocols to use ADU to count towards affordable. I can do some research on that. The Airbnb thing, I can attempt to bring some examples of how communities have drafted zoning, and the same for hotels. The hotel one is easy, because our zoning essentially says no to hotels, and the change would be a striking, like, it's allowed. So that one is easy, and I literally was gonna reach out to Peter and sort of draft it and say, did I miss the word hotel anywhere else? So I, I can publicly say, for October 10th, I should be able to make some movement on that, and at least bring a memo to the board that kinda says, hey, here's a summary of where I am, and then the board can react to it. Does that suffice, Kate, for now, as far as progress?
Follow up with, as Clerk to Trish, to add these specific things as a, it's accessory dwelling unit, affordable housing of accessory, Airbnb short-term related, and downtown hotels.
Okay, and I'm sending that to myself as a, as a trigger for me, so I don't forget to do it. Okay.
The, I think, so we had, this is, skip the by, well, we talked about, there's just, there could be ongoing bylaw updates. Site plan review timelines updated to be the same as special permit timelines, and I know some, Peter brought in, would be helpful, and that doesn't seem like that would be super much to change.
Yeah, I think just that, in my eyes, I think that's just matching up the both, like, the special permits follow, can follow Chapter 40A. Site plan review doesn't even exist in Chapter 40A of Mass General Law, so we have a different timeline, and so I think it just makes sense that we link up and we kind of make it the same in both. And just to make a note, I know we talked about EDUs, excuse me, ADUs, and I know it's one of the.
Do we wanna move on to the next topic? Are we done with the checklist?
I'm, I'll, you know what, I'll make my note point. I'll make, I'll hold on to my point.
Can I just do, well, it's, I got a section meeting with people, and one design review, so the last meeting, we said we probably should try to house.
I did reach out to them, and they are going to get, we, I have a meeting with them Monday, already set for 8:00 PM. I don't know where, so tell me. So that was delegated to me by Tricia, and I will be meeting with them next month.
So maybe that covers, we don't need a whole board meeting at this point.
I will send a memo, because the next meeting I'll be missing. I'll send Tricia a memo about that meeting, and there can be a report that way from me.
Historical Commission, because I think they're working on historical district, there's a local historic district, so I think they had asked to meet with us, so maybe.
No, we met with them, but we'll do a mini presentation here.
Yep, and I don't know if that.
They were working on it, and they will come back.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can, I would just add that I know the Historical Commission met with the local business owners in downtown last week. So I know the local Historical Commission is working to make, to meet with folks regarding that topic.
So Kate, I know you reached out to Sustainability, who has not responded. Do you wanna reach out to the historic folks for an update?
If, sure.
Is that something that the board is comfortable with? So that we have some progress on that? Just find out where they are.
Then, I'm just kinda scanning things, I think we're, well, we can just pick away at each meeting, but I think for, for this timelines, Peter, like, can we tentatively say Spring Town Meeting? We're gonna try to clean that up, the timelines of the special permit.
Yeah.
So I'll just start keeping this up to date.
Yeah, I think Spring Town Meeting would be appropriate.
And I think that's probably sort of you, because it's just, you know, what.
Yeah, that's me, I'll take it, I'll take it, I'll take control of that. And there's one thing I do wanna add to this, and just, this is me just adding to the list, is that for the, excuse me, Charles River flood plain, they're coming out with some new flood overlay districts, and so we're most likely going to have to update our flood overlay district and just accept those at town meeting. It's an update to our bylaw, our flood overlay district bylaw. But it, in, they, this happens from time to time. Last time we did it was 2017, and Ashland is in actually two watersheds. We're in the Concord Sub area, Assabit watershed, and then also we're in the Charles River watershed. And so we are going to have to update our Charles River watershed at this town meeting, annual town meeting, not this one.
Is that state or federal?
State. It starts at the federal, then it filters to the state, and then the state kinda plugs it into the local communities.
Okay. Anything else, Kate, on the checklist?
Nope.
Okay, and so we got through, Tricia, we got through one through six. Obviously, we skipped 100 Chestnut. So now we can go back to that item. Do you wanna take over?
Only if you're.
Go for it. I mean, unless you want me to, going.
Either way. Okay, so, sorry, everybody. So item four on the agenda is 100 Chestnut Street facade adjustments and irrigation modification. Peter, do you wanna give us a, just a summary of what we're gonna be kinda talking about?
Sure, so tonight, first, I wanna introduce the McDowalls, Roy and Todd, and their architect. Michelle Walden with Icon Architecture. So I'm working with Todd and Roy and the McDowalls, and Baso and Development on 100 Chestnut Street. Obviously, the project's going well, and we were out there not too long ago, look at Sadi and look at the facades, and just kinda overall taking a look at the, the major projects. Through our conversations that we have had, it has come up that there has been some minor alterations to the facade, and these are due to, while talking to the McDowalls, and I'll let them obviously tell, tell, talk, is that, you know, from the plan that was approved from the Planning Board, things had to, some minor details had to change due to the floor layout on the inside, walls, structural walls, and so that kinda led to some of the window spacing on the outside. And then also, there has been a, a need to add a new retail door, or secondary retail door at the ground level, and that is, would give the ability of Baso and Development to demise one of the sections, the commercial square foot area, and I think that is in Building One. And that's just one thing, because a couple of commercial re, tenants came in, they didn't like the location of the door facing one way, they kinda wanted it facing the front, facing the street. So these are just kind of in, in interpretation through our conversations. These are kind of real-world modifications that are done on all projects, you know, what projects are approved at one side, at, at one point are obviously not the ones, you know, are actually built in place. And so with that, I think, in knowing where the project stands, and, and obviously the great strides that Baso and Development has made over the course of summer, I thought, you know, it makes sense to come in and talk about them, and it would give the Planning Board the ability to kinda learn that, yes, projects are obviously, do not always go as planned, you know, from the permitting set of, you know, the, the renderings that we see, and that there actually were problems that need to be kinda looked at. And so with that, do you wanna add anything?
I, I just wanted to add that, you know, some of it came up, and I mentioned this to the board before, because we were out there on site one day, starting to look at just the colors. I mean, for no particular reason, just Peter was going out there and inviting me to come along, I said, sure, I wanna come take a look. And there were, you know, there's just some differences in the building from, from the original drawings, and, and I thought it would be a good, on, on the one hand, we, you know, we've had buildings that have come before us that had significant, I'm thinking of 128 Main Street, that were, which I don't think anyone here was on the board at that time, but there were significant differences in the way the building looked, as opposed to what was presented. And so it was something we had to go through, and these weren't that way. In fact, they were very, like, small things to my eyes, but I thought, you know, this is something that the board should understand, and it should be something that we under, we get on the same page with as far as, I don't wanna say a learning opportunity, but it's not that, in order to understand what these projects go through from the time we see them at a very early stage to when they actually go into construction, and what the role of, say, Peter and, and Doug Scott is in this process. Because even on the smallest projects, the little projects I do, we're making changes up until the clients move in, right? So, so I thought it'd be a good opportunity for us to kind of discuss this as a board for, for future projects as well. So I just wanted to, to add that on.
Yeah, so we're gonna talk about the facade, number one. Number two, we're gonna talk about the irrigation. So it has come to my attention, and through the couple emails that I sent out, that we did have a. We did have a condition with our overall decision that the applicant would drill a well for irrigation water. Um, since that time and, and, and please stand, if I stand, if I, I'll kinda talk about it briefly. And then obviously I'll let Roy and Todd kinda jump into it, but, um, a well was drilled, it was nine hundred feet deep, um, which is extremely deep. And there was not, uh, adequate water coming up out of this well, um, so with that said, um, we talked about putting in a cistern. Um, underground which would be fed by the well and then that cistern water would be able to be used to irrigate the landscaping. However, in digging the sit, the, the locations, uh, at the proposed cisterns, ledge was found. And so the McDowell's and Baso and Development have had a tough time, um, finding irrigation, finding enough water. To irrigate the landscaping and so a request has been made, uh, by the McDowell's to connect. To town water for irrigation purposes, um, with that said, um, you know, all regulations regarding what the town has. Regarding irrigation would be similar and or the same to the development. Um, but that is kind of a second to the facade, so I don't wanna put the cart before the horse on, on that one, so. I think that's, I think that's a good plan.
I think you need to, gonna come, need to come to the microphone for the purposes of the recording.
And so these are the updated renderings that I have received from Matt Marata.
Uh, so when the projects are presented to the board and the planning submission is put in. The project itself at that point is only at about ten percent of the way through design. Um, typically, the mechanical engineers, structural engineers, other, other engineering teams on the. On the project are not brought on yet into the project, so. We're making our best estimate based on experience where the window should be, uh, what the facade layout should be. When the other team members are brought on board and coordination begins, then some of the windows have to move. Interior layouts are decided on, uh, coordinated with all of those other consultants. And at that point also, the owners are working through the commercial spaces. With potential retail tenants where their, where their entries might need to be, how the spaces might need to be divided up. Uh, but as we look through the, the documents, comparison of what was originally submitted to. What is currently there, uh, the materiality has not changed, the color palette is, is still the same. And the design intent is still, um, in kind with the original. So I guess i- if there are specific questions, I'm, I'm happy to address those as, as you look through, I think you all have packets here.
And my note, just to, you know, I think, just a big note and you can kinda provide some, some background. That we're looking at two different, we're looking at documents, but they're, the one that we, that, the, the, the. Item two, which is A dash two oh one, that was done in a different software?
Uh, yes, so the original, the original drawings are done in a program called SketchUp, which is very, very loose. Uh, the, the project is then redrawn in a BIM software, which is used to coordinate with the other consultants. And that's very different, um, but aesthetic, everything is, is copied over so the design intent does remain the same. So you may lo, you may see some differences in the way the shadows are drawn or the way the colors, um, come through. But the original color selection has not changed from, from what was originally discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Ju- just for clarity, so A two oh one represents the original design and S K two oh one, the changes, is that right?
I believe that's, yes, that is correct.
The S K logically, okay.
But you're gonna have to come to the microphone, I'm afraid. For those people at home who want to hear.
Sorry. Uh, the other thing to keep in mind is when you look at the overall architecture, you look at the gables, you look at the roof pitches. You look at the overall roof design, that's very much in keeping with the original plans, including the colors of the siding. The locations, generally speaking, the board and batten, the lap siding. So I think the general overall look of the building is pretty much what you had originally. I think as, uh, Michelle had mentioned, because once you start getting the other disciplines involved, some things have to shift a little bit.
Yeah, are questions or comments from the board?
For a project of this magnitude, it's definitely not unusual to have change like that, that's just part for the course, especially when you deal with retail. That you don't, I mean, they don't have leases ready when they present it, so you have to make adjustment to that. So I, I personally don't have a problem with that and, and the changes, um, I mean, I'm trying to kind of, um. Uh, decipher the changes, uh, they seem relatively localized, right, is that right? It's kind of like corners or, um, adjusting some windows here and there, uh, there's one, uh, that. Speaks to removal of some, um, mesh panels that we have on the first floor for the, for the parking area. That is becoming solid, that, it, wh- why, what, what is that due to? Is there, is there a change of, of something that we didn't notice, cause that's something that people will see on the first floor.
A lot of that stems from when we were doing our original energy model and when we came in with that, with the open grates and the cold air coming in. Or the units right above that unconditioned space, we were having a lot of trouble getting the building to meet the new energy codes and energy models. So, uh, you know, that was suggested, we, I did go over that with Peter, uh, a year ago. Uh, so we could actually hit those hurdles and meet the energy requirements for the building.
So you mechanically ventilated the, the garage?
Instead of using the fresh air, just of being an open garage, correct?
Yep, that, that would make sense, uh, and, and what material you're using for those changes, um, on the first floor? Are you using, uh, one of the siding colors that was approved?
Yep, it's one of the siding colors and those are built out as fiber cement panels. Uh, with reglets for additional definition.
It seems kind of consistent with what the project of this size would, would go through in my view, I don't have a comment.
Anna or Kate, do you have any comments?
Um, I just sorta have a comment that I would like us as a planning board to have a process about what's considered a change. Um, I looked up, there's some right around us, right, Shrewsbury, Lunenburg. I don't believe Ashland has any rules about what's considered a de minimis change. But I thought this was interesting in Provincetown, right, so, right, they have like five or six bullet points, but changes, so this is. You, you could go to the town planner or the, um, building commissioner. What they've defined, as best they can, de minimis, changes would be so insignificant as to not be noticeable. To persons generally familiar with the original approval and I would argue since you picked it up, this, this would not be by that definition. I'm not advocating for that necessarily, my, my point being that I don't like it coming afterwards, I wish we would be proactive. So I'm gonna strongly advocate that we have a process and that we don't have something that's different without it being. Brought publicly.
Yeah, I, I agree, that's, and that's actually one of the reasons I wanted to make sure this discussion came before the board. Is because that we should have something both for our comfort level and for the comfort level of the developers. To understand where in the natural process of things, something is a, a change, a, a, whatever the term you use, a change of note. And whether it's just the normal stuff in trying to, to build the building, um, and the reason, like when you said, um. About me noticing, the reason I noticed is that I had the drawings in hand. And was looking at the building and looking at the drawings and looking at the, the, the first time I went up and I didn't notice any different. It looked, it looked like the spirit of what we had, uh, approved and it was only because I had. My architect hat on, really looking at it carefully, that of course I, I picked up things. And, um, and so led, led to this, this discussion, but I, I, I think that's exactly what, I, those comments, um. And notes that you have are, are exactly what I thought could come out of, not today, but come out of a discussion of. How can we put this somewhere, how can we document this somewhere so that, um. That in between period, that in between stuff is, is more defined. So we know when it's something that needs to come back before the board and when if it's, yeah, it's just the nor, it's, it's the normal everyday thing for construction. Right, so I, I agree with you.
So I have a, a related question, um, and I, I was trying to look this up on my phone and I'm gonna try to pull up the zoning, um. The zoning bylaws, the, the thought I have is this project was a major project for the public. We sent out notices, people showed up, I remember this was one of the larger meetings we had, people had a lot to say. Um, obviously we don't send those notices out for this kind of meeting that we have for tonight. Um, however, if we consider the change to be substantial, and I'm kinda looking at both changes together, the water and this. In theory, there could be one reading of the bylaw that I can read at really tiny little phone, which is that you need to file a. A, a request for a modification to the special permit, there's a fee that we can waive. And by doing that, in theory, you're notifying the community and you have some say from the public. Right now, I'm not, I don't think that's the process we're following, we, we seem to have implied that we don't need a modification to the special permit. We don't need notification to the public and the butters and we're sort of deciding, or in, the implication so far in the presentation. Is that these are just tiny minor changes, I disagree, I think that they look significantly different, the colors are different. I for one believe the original design is more refined, I think it looks very different from what the prior design was. And I certainly believe water and connecting to public water is a substantial change. Um, so sort of squeezing these together as if they're minor makes me very uncomfortable, I'm just gonna say that for the record.
I think it's important to understand as they were describing that, um, these two drawings, um, come at. Are, are done on two totally different programs, which have two different color models and so, and different ways of expressing detailing. So they're not, they're not going to look exactly the same, I would, um, you know, uh, I, I've drove past her today. To kinda just take another look at it and it really solidified my view that it really this, it looks. It, in the spirit of what we had approved, right, so, um, so again, the other, like, how do we, um. You, you know, I, I think the point more is how, how do we start to define that for the future? So that there's kinda this comfort level on both sides, knowing that a project at ten percent is not a project at, at a hundred percent. And, um, not to overburden our staff about looking at. Changes that are really, in the architectural world, quite small.
So I, I, I agree and, and there are changes that are substantial, like en masseing or arrangement or really a complete reorganization of the window pattern. Or the materials, that, I don't think that's the case here, this is more, like I said, part for the course for what a project of this size. Means, of course, in Provincetown, for example, probably using a lot of historical, uh, houses. And so changes are a lot more minute, maybe there's a place in depending on the district and depending on the project. Where it would be good to have a range of, consider, uh, some, something that tells us what is a de minimis change or not. I, I, I agree with Anna in one thing that. I, I, I have no problem with the changes, I'm an architect, so I, I, I know how this works and, and I, I feel this is not a substantial modification of the spirit. We also saw throughout that presentation, everything in three D and renderings and everything, it's very different when you see that and when you see flat elevations, it's, it's. This is a drawing that is not very easy to understand for someone that doesn't work on this. But the water thing is something that, that is different, because there is a sustainability component to it that was discussed. Uh, and, and I totally understand the rationale, but they are di- very different problems.
Uh, and I agree with that and I, I didn't comment on that, but that, that is agreed, those are, this one is the, is kind of an aesthetic thing. And the other one is, is, is very different, so, but right now.
But because we started to discuss them together, I wanna be very clear that that, that happened at tonight's meeting. They got squeezed together as minor and so therefore that was what was said, therefore I'm discussing them as if they're together. And if, if they're being presented to us as a board together, then we have to ask the question if these two items together belong on an application. To modify the special permit, which comes with a fee, which comes with notifications of the public, which comes with a deep discussion. And if we're gonna separate the two, that's fine, but that's not how it was presented at the start, which is, oh, these are just minor.
Well, I'm gonna take the heat for that then, because I was asked if we should do one of these. In, 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 uh, in two separate meetings anyway, and I didn't think that was fair to the applicant's time, especially when. You know, that we should at least be able to, to talk about these things and our concerns in the same meeting, even though I think they're really two completely. Different, you know, aspects of the project, so, um, if that, if that's a concern, that was on me and it was my, and it was my call.
Yeah, and I think if we separate them out, I could be convinced by the architects in this room that, yeah, one is more blue. And warmer and the other one is less warm and, but it's not a big deal, I could maybe be convinced because maybe I'm colorblind, to me it makes a big difference. But, but I can maybe be convinced, on the water, I'm not gonna be convinced that that's not substantial, that's pretty substantial, that's public supply.
But the reason they had, they were having the, um, the architect speak first was exactly for that reason, so that we could talk about that and she could go home to Boston. And then we could proceed with the other part, so it was a, trying to be a very clear division of these two things. So in, in keeping with that, why don't we continue on with any other comments, only on the elevations? And, um, I, I understand that, uh, this is a world that, that Marcelo and I live in every day. And we're happy to try to, um, interpret that in the same way. That we often ask Anna to interpret legal jargon for us.
So, I mean, are we asking for a vote on, on that or the, cause I. I mean, if we are gonna vote, I'm gonna abstain, we don't have a basis for what we're judging and after the fact, I, I do not think that's appropriate for us. Or the public, um, but I, I mean, as far as the idea of it, I, I certainly can default to people. Uh, professionals that are saying these are, but I, they're, they're also separate issues for me.
Through the chair if I could. Um, we didn't ask to have these two put together at all, a matter of fact, we're not asking for a change in the decision on the plans. We think the plans are frankly a de minimis change and frankly, we submitted these plans to the planning board a year ago. These plans.
Uh, understood and, and like I said, I, I already said, it was, it was me that put it together, I take. Peter asked me about it, I take full responsibility for that, I thought they were obviously very separate issues and, but I, I didn't understand that they might. Be viewed as one, one ticket, um, so, um. So I, I think, I mean, I, and I, I, I don't, I think there's nothing to really vote. On here unless someone feels that there needs to be, but I, to me, what this was bringing up is to try to, um. Get to an understanding of something that we should put in our process, in our bylaws. And I'm not sure where, I'm not sure, so that, so that this is the no, that, so that the norm that already exists. In the construction and design industry is more known to the public, if, if that, if that makes sense?
I disagree with that, I, I think that, um, just like lawyers can disagree about interpretations of law. Um, architects certainly have opinions that are, that matter, but I think that the concept that in your professional lives, this is normal. Is not necessarily the way the public or the layperson would, would interpret a project. So, um, I, I think we would need to do a little bit more research on that and understand how, what is the state law on substantial change? Um, is it architecture standard or layperson standard, what, what does it mean? And so case research is helpful and I think we need to explore that a little bit more, because I don't know if the layperson would agree with the interpretation. That, hey, well, this is normal for architects to sort of change these things and therefore it's normal for Ashland. change these things and therefore it's normal for Ashland. I'm not sure if I can.
So that is, is, is needs to be that regulated or, or it is, but I, I would say that th- this is a process. I don't know. Roy, you were saying that this was submitted. So are these changes consistent with the building permit drawings that were submitted for, for construction?
Yes.
I, we believe so, yes. And I will say.
With, with the changes?
Yes, and I will say, these, these plans were submitted uh, about a year ago. And I think it was at least our understanding that they were ministerial and de minimis changes and we didn't think much more after that.
Okay, so Tricia, just trying to follow up on what you were saying. It seems like if, uh, that what Kate is proposing makes a lot of sense to me. We need kind of a system, right? Just need to find out what that is. It seems to me that a project of, of, of certain size, especially projects of this size. It would be um, it would be good to satisfy also what Anna is highlighting that some, we establish a process by which before submitting for building permit, let's say with a certain, let's say at um, 75% CDs or something like that. When, when the architect is already has understood, understood all the, the conflicts with other systems of the buildings, that's totally normal process, that they could, if they are changes from the approved, that they could come and explain them before they're filed for building permit. That would be a process that would say, okay, we approved the spirit of a project and materiality and massing and what have you. And then they, they, they work, the carpentry of it is ready, almost ready to go. And then they can highlight the changes so that before the construction, that's all understood. Seems to me that that would be a process. That would be simpler instead of having to, well, I don't think we need to.
That seems reasonable.
What's that?
That seems reasonable.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to kind of uh, create a, a law precedent or something, but it's, it, it, because these things are, are a process that is, I mean, getting a project of this size, it's very complicated. It just takes a lot of time from hundreds of people. So it, things change. I mean, that's just the wa- the nature. So, so as long as we see it and then we have the chance to say, or explain that change more because that's more than meets the eye, you know? If you got a, a good reason, then we can have at least one chance to say, change it a little bit before you submit for the permit or, okay, we accept it. But we have that chance.
So um, so are, are we good to obvious, are we good letting them proceed? Obvi- I mean, we don't have the, obviously the right to shut down construction. Is, is the board okay with these changes? And then obviously we will be working in the future toward a little different process about how to, how do we look at this further down the road?
I mean, I think we should vote and I, I can go with this. I'm not delighted, but I can go with the changes. It sounds like.
I do agree. And I, I think if this was submitted and the town did not have any argument against it before they give the permit. I think it's unfair to say otherwise at this point.
On the, on the, on the renderings, not the water.
On the aesthetic.
Yeah, not the water, yes. Okay.
I think we should vote.
I'm going to stick with abstaining because I mean procedural and process. I, I just don't feel good about approving something that looks different than what we approved with, and I understand that could be considered minimal, but we have to do better.
I think for formality, we should take a vote because we should take responsibility that this is ours and we are acknowledging it. And so I think a vote is important. Obviously, if you want to abstain, as part of that, that's yours, but I, I would feel, I believe we should take responsibility and take a vote.
What does that vote say?
That I, we, I can make a motion that we are essentially supplementing our prior decision to reflect the fact that there is a change in some elements of the design and presentation of SK 201 becoming the new reality versus A 201. That's the motion. And then we can, this is part of the official decision that we are supplementing our prior vote because we're technically approving this, not the prior renderings. Or we're supplementing the prior renderings. That would be the motion. I know it's a complicated one. I can try that again.
I, I'm good with it.
Okay.
All right, so I'll second that. All right, Anna, roll call vote?
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Aye.
Catherine Jersey, abstain.
Anna Tricia Kendall, aye. So like I said, I think we continue this in the future so that we have s- this in place as other projects come through. So. Um, okay, so then there's the water issue, which is different. Thank you for your time. So the water issue, I, I am not sure. Uh, there's, there's obviously various things. Uh, I'm not sure the, the direct direction to, to go on that or, or what the options are. I had. Yeah, please. I'd appreciate that.
Sure, yeah, I'd love to give a little background how we got to asking you for this.
Sorry, I meant Anna.
Before we kind of hear from the applicant, can we kind of reset us to our jurisdiction and make sure that water is in fact part of our jurisdiction? So that we don't misstep accidentally.
Okay, but do you have something appropriate?
I'm trying to, but I, I think Peter, since this is being presented to us, not the select board who is in theory the water authority for the state, excuse me, for the town, can we just make sure that, and I'm looking at the special permit and I'm trying to make sure that we can regulate this relative to our projects.
Peter, do you have any insight on that?
Peter can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we have jurisdiction together with Concom for this type of request. Because I do not want to be speaking and then have legal counsel slap our wrists the way this has happened before.
No, it's a good point.
If we are not sure, then we should not be doing this until we have a memo.
So.
I would add this.
The water and sewer commissioners are the select board and I was going to raise that, that I do not believe this is under our purview to allow a connection to the public water supply.
I would like to confirm that from legal counsel and so therefore there would be a waste of time frankly, to hear from the applicant until we make sure that we're not discussing something that we're going to be found inappropriately to be discussing.
Through the chair.
Please.
We have spoken to the water department. The water department is fine with us connecting.
Yeah, I think um, it, yeah, yeah, then I know what you're saying, Anna. I, I think though that while we have them here, I would like to unders- I would like to take the opportunity to understand the background, um, since you're here and to, to understand how you get to this point so that we're in full understanding of it. Even though we're not, maybe we're stepping back saying it may, may not be in our jurisdiction, but u- understanding is, that's okay for everybody, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to us and hear the background of this request. So uh, as the decision says that we should use a private well for irrigation of the site, we agreed with that and we thought that was a great idea. You know, if we don't have to pay for public water, uh, private, you know, that's great. So we, we went and it, it put a well in 500, 600, so we got to 950 feet deep. We were getting minimal flow. We went and even then fracked that well uh, to try to increase water flow. And it, after all that work, we were getting 11 gallons per minute, which is about a garden hose worth, the, your, your average garden hose. So, you know, given that we wanted to do a private well, we then tried to think of a new design. All right, what if we we looked at steel pipe going down further, so you're going to put a stronger pump, doesn't really matter. Uh, so then we looked at putting a cistern in the ground. Okay, if we put a cistern, we could have the well pumping constantly to fill that cistern. So then when our irrigation system runs, we have a reserve of water to use. One of the issues we've come up with was using this method, we will not have enough water to run a full cycle. And so we're discussing, okay, if there's not enough water because the well doesn't produce enough during that time period. Why don't we probably be running sprinkler systems based on pump size almost all day, every day? Getting town water to supplement that so we could actually get watering done more efficiently and keep this, the landscaping alive. Because right now, based on the well, even with the cistern, it just doesn't produce enough water to run the cycles and keep the plant material alive. So we, we did some exploratory holes just last week and there's both kind of locations near the pump that it could possibly go. There's significant amounts of ledge, four feet under and these tanks are large. They go down about 14 feet deep and about 15 feet long. And it's become challenge after challenge from designing a irrigation system with 60 zones, which is kind of crazy when you think about it. And, and we've kind of feel like we've gone every route we can and we keep hitting roadblock after roadblock trying to solve this issue. We've, uh, as you know, as we designed our site with almost all native species to reduce the water need of those plants. We have eco grass in a large portion in the, in the rear area that were, actually requires no watering. So the, the, the site is designed with a sustainable uh, effort in mind to, you put plants that are low water consuming, native to the area. And even so, we're still running into this problem and we, we.
If I could make one comment. Um, so we did look into a 10,000 gallon tank. We were more than happy to buy it if it was going to work. We met today again with irrigation people and they said, even if you put a 10,000 gallon tank in, we'd have to do 60 zones. I said, I don't care however many zones it takes. He said, but here's the problem. Because the well is only putting out 11 gallons a minute, there'll never be enough water to fill the tank. And the zones will probably be running 20 to 24 hours a day just because they need so many zones. So even if we put in a tank, even if we drilled and blasted and put the tank in, we would still need to have some form of public water just to have the tank work. Otherwise, why put a tank in if never going to fill it? So my conundrum is, if we don't have water, the plants won't live. So we're here respectfully requesting if we could use, tie into public water.
Does anyone have a, any questions about this? You know, again, it's a learning opportunity. Let's gain some knowledge here for questions on other projects.
I mean, it's not really a question for the applicant. I, I appreciate the applicant's explanation. Um, and I, I understand the, the challenge they're under. I, I'm trying to understand our role so that I can properly comment. All I, I will ask is the board, these are the questions I'm asking myself, which are when we have conditions relative to landscaping, we as a board need to consider whether we have sufficient information. Clearly, we need to consider whether we and the applicant have sufficient information that the special, the special condition can actually grow, no pun intended, flourish, flower, um, landscape, right? And so that's a question I'm asking. And clearly in this context, somehow that did not happen, which surprises me because this is a major project of massive proportion, multiple years. And it's very shocking to me that no one connected to this property. And I'm not going to blame this particular developer at all because this was owned by other people. But it's very shocking to me that the prior owner would have no context for the lack of, what do you call it? Proper.
Water pressure.
Water pressure, exactly. Um, so I believe that we were blindsided. I think these are the kinds of things we should have explored more. And I'm not blaming the applicant because the applicant comes in with some lacking potential access to prior records, et cetera. So I'm just saying out loud, this is a question I'm asking myself, how did we miss this? We missed this. We, we allowed landscaping as a condition without thinking through the consequence. Number two, do we have jurisdiction? We sort of do and we sort of don't. We kind of seem to have it because we can, we can talk about impact, as you recall, part of our permitting discussions, we are, we are authorized to discuss things like impact on infrastructure. This is why we talk about population and who's going to move in and how much it's going to cost and, and we talk about police costs and infrastructure, that's part of it. So it feels like our jurisdiction somewhat. But the idea of plugging it into the public supply also feels like select board jurisdiction. So I, I feel like that's a question we need to explore before we can make any decision on this. Depending on the answer to that question, we may need to have a formal, in my opinion, a formal what's it called? A modification of the special permit and, and notification to the public, all of that, because that is substantial if it's ours to deal with per legal counsel. So that's question number two. And the last thing is more of a comment, which is where I live, which is a different part of town, neighbors are complaining about changes of water pressure, public water pressure changes. So our community is growing. It is significantly developing and people are noticing an impact on their public water supply. Whether, there's all kinds of controversy about whether we have enough or we don't have enough. Should we plug into the emergency supply once in a while or in the non-emergency supply? But I can tell you, this is very important to the public and the idea of plugging into public water because we need some nice landscaping that we, the planning board approved, makes me really uncomfortable. We need to explore that a little bit and make sure we know what we're doing.
Through, through the chair if I could.
Um, I think Marcelo had a comment.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, that, that was a lot, so I, I, I don't, I, I just see it in, in a simpler way. I think two questions first. So are you asking, you, you, you tested the possibility of uh, putting a cistern, you found ledge. Are you asking to connect without the cistern or with the system?
Actually, I think Anna brought up a very good point. We're not actually here asking you to let us use public water. We're asking you to simply drop the restriction. We'll go through the other town boards, whether it's the water department, selectmen, whomever it is. Because you, I think you're right. I don't think it's your place to decide whether we connect to public water. But it is your place because you put a restriction that we can't, we had to use a well. I think if you just were willing to lift the restriction, don't even say we can use public water. Just simply say, we're not restricted to a well. And that's totally in your purview and then we will go to wh- whomever we need to go to.
Yeah, that, that's the way, that's the way I was seeing it. I, I think, that, that is kind of, that, that's clear to me, the way you explained it. And, and because yeah, we, we, we're not going to decide on the things that we don't have to decide. Question number two, did you explore the possibility of harvesting, harvesting rainwater and connecting it to the cistern also?
It would be very difficult now because the whole system is a massive, probably oversized system because it's gravel under the parking lot, right? It was a cul tech system and everything from the roof drains, everything goes into that. And because it's such great gravel, almost the moment it goes in there, it literally dissipates into the, to the groundwater. So we, we actually got on the phone with our engineers today and asked that question. Because if that was feasible, we'd be happy to do it. He just says, it's not going to work.
Okay, so my comment um, was, it's, is, it's kind of simple. So what, what we, the, 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 the way I see it. The intention of what we approved was a, a project with a, with a bunch of sustainable features. Uh, I think some were described here. The planting, the PV array, uh, roof ready and everything, that, that all. It, the, was, the, the intention, I think, was met on that approval. Drilling a well over here or over there, I mean, once you get into mother earth, you could find water in one place and none in the other and be like 20 feet apart. The same is true with, or geological features that you will find. I don't think that would be, that having one well before would be predictable for, for this project in the future. So it, it, the, the, the process that's been described to me is makes sense. A justified effort to, to do everything you can to make the system work as it was approved, seems to have taken place. If, 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 if the town or the authorities that deal with the water believe that, that, that there's no issues with it for whatever, whatever technical rationale they have is. Then, then what, I, I don't feel the need to be encumbered by, by hypotheticals. I, I think I would be in favor of, of dropping the, the restriction on the basis that, that an effort has been made to, to a, a real life problem that is, is the earth. Sometimes, not everything goes perfect, but that's not for us to say. I think that the water department or the select board would have to make that call. I, I, I see it as simple as that.
I, I, um, my perspective is that like, to Anna and Marcelo, both of your points. You know, I think we could maybe take for the future, a suggestion that maybe we were a little bit more open-ended in those types of conditions. And that, you know, maybe a simple modification rather than even dropping it, to modify it to say, if feasible. If it's not feasible because, you know, or if geologically feasible, like if we could put something in there that covers them now that still has the intention of the original decision and going forward, we can sort of know that we can't just say that you have to use well water because we know that it's, might not be technically feasible for a project to be able to use groundwater when they, once they start. So, I mean, a very like base modification of, just a modifier within the existing condition to say like, if you can, if this is all reasonable efforts to.
No, that, and, and, and that makes sense, but
Are made.
The, the, the other wrinkle to this is that, for example, I have a well in my house for irrigation. I think it goes down like 150 feet. My, my grass is dead because uh.
Because you're an architect, not a landscaper.
No, it hasn't, it's, it's, it's a crappy well because it doesn't yield what, what I would have liked.
Mine is, mine is dead too.
So that's, that's why, when, when I bought it, the pre- previous owner was forced to connect to the town water. So my grass is dead. So, my grass is dead. I said it again. The neighbors, especially on that, on that community, were promised a place that had good landscaping for buffer and for visual privacy. And it would be silly to have all that die in front of their windows too. I mean, there's just no, there would be no point.
This is why, but rather than just saying, oh, we're just never gonna do that condition again, I kinda look at it as the reverse. I think that was an excellent condition, because what we are saying is, whatever landscaping you do, try to do it in your own private well. So really, to me, the responsibility is on the board to figure out, is there sufficient water supply to do this privately, number one. Number two is, maybe our landscaping ideas were too limited. Maybe we should've considered, is there a different way to do this, that does not require so much water, and we didn't, including the rainwater concept that is, apparently is too late to consider now, and we should've considered it. So, I disagree strongly that the lesson here is, oh, we should just always allow the potential for public water. I disagree with that. I think instead, for the future, we should be asking those questions. Has there been a study of water supply? Has there been an understanding of whether this landscaping can be supported? Do we have Plan B, if that's not enough? Do we have an alternative landscape plan that does not touch public water? I believe we have a responsibility to try to limit the need for public water whenever we can. If it cannot happen, we should, we should attempt to redefine the landscaping. In this context, if this board wants to remove that restriction, I would also want to explore, can we somehow change landscaping, so we don't need so much public water?
These are all good ideas and suggestions, and I think these are actually very beneficial, including the earlier conversation about the architecture. So, we call them in our business, lessons learned. Every time we build a project, we write a list, never do that again, or this, you know what I'm saying? So I think these are good points. The problem is, there is so much plant material on this site, that well would probably comfortably take care of 10% of it. So, to start tinkering with the planting is almost a waste of time, unless you eliminate 90% of the planting, which none of us want to do. We've got a beautiful arborvitae hedge, 10, 11 feet tall, there's 90 of them in a row, purely for the benefit of our neighbors. It gives them a nice, beautiful green screen. That takes a lot of water, water 90 arborvitae's. And, and I think the point came out, and I didn't even think about it till, I think maybe it was Anna that said it, we're not asking you to approve us for water. We're just asking you, would you please lift the restriction that we have to use a well, just leave it like that, which doesn't obligate you to anything, it obligates us to then go to other parts of the town, to see if they will let us connect to public water.
And I think that with the plantings, too, there's also a difference between planting or watering things till they get established. I mean, arborvitae's don't need to be watered, like, for the rest of their lives, right?
Oh, for the.
They're everywhere around Ashland, and we don't water them, they grow perfectly fine.
The most important timeline for planting is the first year.
Exactly.
I'll give you an example of, forget the numbers. If you need 100 gallons the first year, the second year you probably need 50, third year you probably need 20. So you can see, it goes down, because once the roots gets established, it starts sucking moisture out of the ground itself. But when they're still encased in their own root system, they do need water, because they don't have that connection.
Agreed. And that was just this thing about talking about all these arborvitae's, as if we needed to water them from now until the end of time, which we don't, right?
No. We'll be using, we'll be using substantially less if we get to use the town water year two, and even less in year three, to a point where it's quite small. And by the way, because we've got more drought tolerant plants, because we've got eco grass, we're using a lot less water, just by the plan that you approved.
And eco grass is what, again? It's not, it's just a drought.
Is that what they put on the highways?
It's not, it's not as attractive as bluegrass, but it suits the purpose.
But it's green, and it, and it doesn't take a lot of water.
Yes.
We don't want it in our yards, but it's green, and we're happy with it.
That was a recommendation from the, that was a recommendation from the design review, I think.
I mean, it went through design review, I can't, I can't remember specifically.
I thought it was an original condition from, no, somebody you added, okay, yeah. So our conundrum is this, we actually have engaged our landscape contractor, we're hoping to start doing planting this fall, because we hope to occupy the buildings in April, and in order to get C of O, you're pretty much gonna get most of the project complete. And if the planting is not done, it's kinda hard to get all this equipment around, people living in the buildings. So we're kind of in a tight spot, and we're really hoping to do the planting, but we can't do the planting until we know we have water.
And I think, I just wanna clarify, I was not suggesting that we don't do the condition anymore in the future. I think it's information that, like, we can't just say, if we're gonna put in a condition that says you have to use a well, we can't say that, if it might result in exactly this, which is an applicant back here, two years later, saying we can't.
But I do, I do think you can say, we'd like you to, best practices to try and do a well, and have them prove to you they actually did it.
Right, or have, you know, we've now heard rainwater, we can, as a board, have sort of a list of ways that we say we would prefer irrigation be in these manners. I personally think that dropping the condition is much, and then allowing the select board, or whoever has jurisdiction over the water connection, is much less disruptive than going back to the drawing board on landscaping, which mattered. I mean, I was not on the board when this project was before, but I think I was at meetings where it was discussed, and I think, knowing how, just how folks in town in general feel about the appearances of projects, like, I think nobody wants all of those plantings to be brown and crusty in nine months.
Those are good points. I mean, I could, like I said, I could, I'm speaking about the past. I wish we had a time machine and go back in the past. I think the tragedy of this is because we didn't ask those questions, we can't retain the rainwater, apparently, and we can't consider other options.
What you commented about that makes a lot of sense, though.
About what?
About establishing those type of, kind of tiers for landscaping irrigation, as like a checklist of things that we want to make sure projects like this are, is discussed.
Yep. I wish I had been more pushy about green roofs. Some buildings in Boston are putting landscaping literally on top of their roofs, in part two, heat, cool, address climate change.
I'm doing one of those, you have to irrigate them to establish.
Understood, understood. But these are all things we could've explored, that could be alternatives, or things that we did not push, because they're quote-unquote more expensive. Well, now, we're gonna be paying for it with public water. So, the expense, the things the developers say no to, because they're too expensive, end up not being asked for, not being pushed for, not being considered reasonable, and then we need to connect it to public supply, which all of us pay for. So, I'm just gonna throw that out there.
I don't think that's the case.
Well, public water, you mean?
Yeah. Very expensive, very expensive.
Actually, it's a lot more expensive, a gallon of irrigation than it is for consumption.
Well, no, not only that, but when you're commercially using, you pay a higher rate.
I guess to me, payment is not just about who's paying the bill, but the infrastructure.
The lack thereof.
Well, that's for the water department to say, yeah.
So, I don't wanna use other words, so I'm using the word pay. But what I will say is, I get the argument, and I don't think we have much of a choice in the matter, right now.
Well, I think that's, I think it's just, again, I don't wanna keep reiterating what others have said, but it is kind of a, something we're gonna continue to learn about, not, you know, in various projects. As we keep doing better, as Kate says, I think with each project, we do better, but with each project, there's also new issues, because no two projects are alike.
And this was the first one of the big ones, right, that we got?
Yeah, so, and that happened to come into this circumstance, right? So, so I guess the, yeah, the qualification would be to, to remove, and I assume, it wasn't just one and done, trying to find one particular spot for a well, there was.
We spoke to our well people, so what about over here? Because you're right about that. What about, he said, Roy, we went down 30 feet, head ledge. We went down 950 feet, head ledge. He says, the ledge is so dense and so hard, because normally you can get fissures and fractures, and water travels. He said, I could drill wells all over the place here and get nothing more. So, if it was a different type of site, you're absolutely right.
And I'll also add, we do need to be, the well needs to be a certain distance from sewer lines and stuff like that, that's what part of the requirements is.
Right.
And we have sewer lines all over the place. So there's a lot of reasons why, believe me, we'd rather not be here.
Yeah.
But we're forced with this dilemma.
Yeah, I mean, I think, like you said, it's not, it's not the position any of us wanna be in, but we know that we have other housing coming our way.
Yeah, and I was gonna ask about that, but do you think, Tricia, or everybody, that these considerations are even going to apply on a 40B project?
Well, and other projects, right? I don't know.
Well, I can tell you, 40B, you can't deny them water.
But why does that matter here? This is not a 40B project.
We're just talking about, we're just talking about other larger projects, that this is just isn't one and done, this is like, a bigger issue across Ashland, and, you know, MBTA, and, you know.
It's a lot, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot. So, okay, so, I guess we're looking for a motion to remove the condition.
I'll make it, I'll make a motion to remove the condition to prohibit the use of public water for irrigation.
In a second? Or do you have a comment?
I thought we were considering that this was sort of a major change, or not, in considering the process, because I, I feel like, if anyone in here doesn't know that water's a very sensitive issue with people in town, right? We have a water ban, and I feel like, if, if this is the size change that Anna had brought up, that, that is, is a request for modification, that we have to strongly consider that, to make that a public, that, and I would, if we did that, I would assume a parallel path can be, we should step up proactively and say, hey, there's an applicant in front of us, and we really think it's probably a water and sewer commissioner, that, I'm not trying to slow it down, I understand the concerns, but I also feel like this has to be very public.
So, so I guess it's also been talked about, that we're not sure where some of the responsibilities lie, and that we should.
I think we're pretty confident that we can't say, sure, connect it to public water. That's definitely not our purview.
Right.
We know that, that's fine.
Right.
So I think we figure that out, together.
So, so do we need input information from any other bodies about the directions we have to go?
I think the only direction we're being asked to go is, remove the restrictions, so that the applicant can then go to the select board and ask for the permission.
Yeah, I, I see, I see it that way, Anna's explaining it, because basically, the process starts when the restriction is removed. So publicly, they have to go to the other bodies in the town and ask for that.
Kate, your question is, is removing the restriction a substantial enough modification that there should be the process that Anna put forward?
And I agree with Kate that it is. And the reason it's important is, and I'm sitting here, and I'm thinking, okay, if we reopen this well, no pun intended, there's gonna be a well, no pun intended, of public attention, and so, or maybe intended. I think we need to focus the public, that this is the only issue we're discussing. We are not talking about anything else.
And that we don't have control over the decision of whether or not the town water is used.
And the benefit of that, notifying the, the folks who live there, and giving them that chance, and I would want the notice to be very specific, that we're only discussing lifting that one restriction, so that any further decision is made by the select board. That should be very, very clear, so that we don't reopen an entire process.
So what would be the two choices, what would be the choices that the public would be discussing? Either we remove that restriction, or we remove vegetation from the site.
Or we change the landscaping, or we remove vegetation, we do other things.
But we don't have to invent that, it's up to the applicant, he made a simple proposal, I would like you to remove the restriction. I don't think you have to say, invent redoing the landscaping.
Yeah, if I could make one comment, I don't see this as a major change, I actually think it's a minor change, and the reason being is, if you just simply lift the restriction, we're in limbo. You haven't allowed us to do anything. We have to now go to other boards, yet to be determined who they are, to see if we can get public water. It, it's not really a responsibility yours. The only thing we're asking you to do, is simply lift the restriction, put us in limbo, you know, if whatever board we goes to, if the neighbors wanna talk to them, let them talk to them, let them, let them come to the selectmen, or water committee, whomever it may be. So I don't really think it's so much in your purview, as you're allowing it to be in someone else's purview.
Peter, what is the precedent on this?
So, from my history, right, I would say this would fall into the categories of minor modification, and it would not need public notification. You know, going back, you know, not in any projects I've really had to deal with here, but in other projects, whenever there's a major modification, yes, then, and I agree, I know we're talking, talking about processes, right? And I'm happy to do that, and then a lot of other towns, they kind of highlight what requires a whole public notification, what doesn't. You know, I think in many instances, if a project proposes additional units from what was proposed, then yes, you're gonna go back out and do a whole notification process after that hearing is closed. I think, in my eyes, that, yes, this is a fairly, it's minor, it's, you know, I think we've talked about this a lot, I think the applicant has proven beyond a reasonable doubt, that they've exhausted their avenues to put in a well, and there's, there's cons to that, right? And there's, and so, with that, you know, in my eyes, I would say this does not qualify for full public hearing, to reopen a full public hearing, to do all advertisement, and which is a big effort on its own. And I think, I, that's where I land, as a town planner.
And I think, like, my perspective, I agree, and I think my perspective is, so, I think the applicant stated it nicely, we're like, we're not agreeing to anything, we're just revising a condition that was not, as it turns out, hindsight's 2020, was not possible to be met. So we're just editing a requirement that is, is not possible. And I think in that way, that makes it, that assist in the reading that it's a minor modification, right? Like, we're not.
I also think that it's our job, as an elected board, to make the kind of calls that happen on these projects like this, that we have these public hearings, they're open for, obviously, any issue that comes up, but when other things come up in process, I think it's our job to handle those things, not to open it up again, to say, hey, we're gonna take another big vote. We have been elected to this role, and it's our job to figure it out, right? Not to throw it back always on the residents. They've asked us to do it. That's our role on the planning board, right? Otherwise, we can just do a Google poll for everything out there, right? But we can't. We have to take the responsibility and figure something out. Sometimes you take some heat for that, and sometimes you don't. That's where, that's where I land.
I totally agree. I think we're here to exercise our judgment on items that are.
But you have to remember, this is a special permit, there's only four of us here today who can vote on that, right? We don't have DPA here. So, I think we have to be cautious to that as well, because if Kate and I have one view, and the two of you have the other, that's not gonna really go anywhere, today. So, with all due respect, I don't think we're sending anything back to the public. I think, I think the position I'm taking, and I believe Kate is taking, and with all due respect to Peter, I don't remember any project in Ashland where we have had to come back to deal with public water supply. So, on the one hand, I can be easily convinced tonight that the proper course of action is to lift this restriction. I can vote that way in a second. However, I also agree with Kate, that this project is sensitive. This project was one that has a rich history in this community, of sensitivity and controversy, and there are reasons to allow the public a position of understanding that the beauty that we are requiring is going to require this particular factor, mitigation, that's required. And there's a beauty to that. And with all due respect, I don't think we're somehow not doing our job in making sure that the public is correctly informed. I believe that is our job.
But through the.
But this is a public, this is a public hearing. This is not a hearing, but it's a public meeting.
If you look at our agenda, I don't, I don't believe the agenda that was posted adequately gives the public notification that we're being, we're being asked to lift a restriction relating to public water. And so, no, this agenda.
Hold on, Anna.
But I was still talking. This agenda does not give the public any idea, that we're going to potentially allow that.
I think we're, just to keep the pons of water, it seems to me that this is more like making a strongener glass of water, because we are, it's a very specific condition of the reality, after everything has been exhausted to meet that requirement on the, on the condition. The sensitivity of the project and everything is something that everybody dealt with, and yeah, I know the covenant, we dealt with, that was a lot. I, I, I. I, 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 I seriously doubt that the, that the, the community immediate to this project or at large would be, uh, would, would really have a care of that item more than removing the landscape or having it die. It, it just, it's not reasonable.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? Oh, do you have one more thing to say, Anna?
I have a compromise that might work, but...
Okay, well, let's hear those two things, and then I'll...
No, I, I think like the building is there, right? Regardless of the sensitivity, like, I think opening, my perspective is that opening it up in that, I don't think, I'm not saying avoid opening it up because we don't wanna wade back into that. That's not what I'm saying, but I think it is a minor change to a condition that is, was never feasible. It wasn't feasible when it was written in, we just, no one knew it. So my, my perspective is, if we take the, I think, extremely conservative approach and require a formal process and open it up to the public, I don't think the, I don't think the conversation is going to be necessarily constructive, or get a, like, to Marcelo's point, like, what, what is the, the other alternative, a dirt desert out there? Nobody wants to drive by that on Chestnut Street every day. So I, I mean, my perspective is that this is our job. All we need to decide today is minor, not minor, and, and then move forward, and my perspective is that it's minor. And I, I know that I'm not voting here tonight, but that's my...
I, I have a...
Can we do both?
I have a compromise position, and I, I mean, I, I could, I could vote to approve this with the understanding that, um, I, I don't wanna leave it a mystery as to who they're gonna go to. I, I think we need to be very blatant that, that we believe this is within the purview of the select board to address whether or not they get public water, um, and that we would want them to also explore whether CONCOM has jurisdiction. If those two things they're willing to do, they're willing to go to the select board and ask, and they're willing to go to CONCOM and make sure that this is not somehow within their view, I could vote for it tonight, because I know that if that happens, there will be public vote at the, or public participation of the select board.
We're... I, I have another, I have another, uh, potential way of, of, of doing it. What happens if, if we do both at the same time? Because I think we're more at the end of the, in agreement than we are not. If, if we remove the restriction, but at the same time, Peter, I don't know, I'm not talking about, uh, uh, like a legal notification or anything, but is there an avenue on, on the town website or, or through email or whatever to spread the word to the residents or whoever, to say, the project is going through this process, they will be attending other, other boards, whoever, the, the water department, the select board, whatever, be aware if you want to, to go and, and make your voice heard. Is, is, is there a way to do that, and we do it at the same time?
It would be the select board's agenda, right? Because like ours says irrigation modification, which like, to be fair, it's not explicit that like the modification is going to require town water. But it's there. I mean, if anyone, like, this was a hot button project, I mean, Chestnut's there, it's on the, you know, there's not, it's not like it was buried. It's item four. I, I, but that, if it's, it's not the modification anymore when it's a select board, right? That's, that's the tie-in.
Through the chair.
I think that... Peter, go ahead. Peter, why don't you go first?
I, I think we're talking about the Conservation Commission, the Select Board, we're kind of moving things around. I think the jurisdiction of who is allowed to connect to town water is the water in the DPW, the DPW overall, right? And the water in sewer superintendent, right? I'm happy to email the conservation agent, I'm happy to email the select board, and, and then, yeah, tomorrow, right? And ask if there are any concerns, if there's worries, or if there's any red flags to this modification or this change. And then to kind of vet through those red flags or issues that arise, um, in that, in that sense.
Peter, I, I like Anna's idea, except that I would make it a little different. Rather than saying what specific boards, maybe say, uh, with the understanding that the applicant will go to the appropriate boards for approval for water connection, because I'm not sure if it's the water department, the selectmen, and it may be combination of all the above. But whatever it is, we all know we're not gonna get water until the appropriate people approve it.
I, I concur with Roy. Uh, you know, I think, I'm happy to vet this through and, and take this through with the developer.
But the first concern is lifting the restrictions so we can start that process.
We got that. Hold. So... So I guess are people comfortable with lifting the restriction with, um, caveats about going to the appropriate board, public notification of that process? Or is this something we need more information on, and it needs to come back to us in two weeks to make a further step on it?
I mean, I think it's a little of both, but there's, so, like, to me, this ends up being like another technical review, right? We are not, we don't, we have plenty of information. The applicant did a good job saying, I don't think this is gonna work. We don't have any town information, right? So I think there's lots of possibilities. I wish this was not written this way, because that's part of the uncomfortable about trying to vote on this. Like, that being well described. Um, but I think there's a potential solution for a vote, but it's very messy.
All right, so...
There's bugs flying around. I'm not losing my mind. The notice that we gave for tonight kind of sucks. I would feel much more comfortable, uh, without it, with a better one. However, I, I do under- I don't think we need, I don't, I'm not convinced we need expertise to lift the restriction. I think we have enough to lift the restriction. What I'm more concerned about is whether there's sufficient process relative to the public, et cetera. I would be comfortable with the proposed language. I like the idea of Peter reaching out to the select board and CONCOM. And I very much like the idea of some sort of public notification, whether it's through the town manager's newsletter or a notification on the town website that the planning board has lifted this restriction, and the applicant is heading to the correct boards to address this issue. All that as a package would make it very easy for me to approve this tonight. But it, it would have to be a package deal that addresses all of the concerns essentially.
I just wanna make a note, I'm happy to put a note on the town, on the planning board website. I think that's appropriate. We can do that. It's an easy lift.
But it's also understood that the planning board can't obviously add an item to the select board or the Conservation Commission agenda. All we can do is...
No, but I think we have the responsibility, but we're saying that part of our vote is that we're going to communicate to them and invite them to consider... Now, I don't think we're inviting them to consider. I think that's really up to the applicant, to figure out, hey...
We don't even know if they are the, the board, right?
Oh, they are. They are the water commission. But I, I think it's up to select board, legal counsel, and the applicant to figure out what their role is. I'm not gonna tell them to read the law. They can figure that out. I just know that it's not us. We're not the ones who turn that water on.
I, I think if you vote this this evening, we will immediately tomorrow work with Peter. We'll talk to the selectmen, whomever else, the water department, and find out the exact process. And what we'll do is, once we understand the full process, we'll immediately report it to Peter, who can then distribute it to you.
Can we get a report of what ha- what happened with that process in the next meeting, Peter?
Oh, a hundred percent.
Okay, so does someone want to summarize that?
No, because all the pieces are... I mean, I can try. I, I can try to make a motion. Um, I, I will make a motion to...
Oh, wait a minute, I withdraw my motion.
You, do you wanna make it?
No, I, I made it already.
He had a, he had a motion that he just withdrew.
So now you can do yours.
Oh. All right. Um, I will make a motion to approve the request for the irrigation modification, including the removal of the restriction regarding public water, with the understanding or condition that the applicant will reach out within a short amount of time to relevant boards such as the select board, CONCOM, or others with input from the planning office, and that there will be a public notification through the town website or, and/or other appropriate town menus that Peter can explore, the planning department can explore, so that the public is notified that the planning board lifted the restriction and that the applicant is pursuing proper action.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a roll call.
Anna Tesmanitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye. And Tricia Kendall, aye.
Thank you very much. We much appreciate it.
All right, thanks for...
I have a, I have a technical question. If, if we modified a decision, does that have to get filed, refiled?
Does that have to be signed?
So traditionally, what I've always done in the past is I'll draft up a memo. Um, I've always drafted, drafted up a memo, and norm- I've, if the board feels comfortable, I've signed them before and filed it with the town clerk, and typically, they do not go to the registry of deeds. However, they just normally just stay on file with the town. So in this case, I'll draft up a simple memo, just saying, this is, this was the motion, and it obviously, and it deletes this, you know, special condition number X on the decision filed date, when, where, and then I'll share that with the board, or Tricia or Anna the board, or Tricia and, and Anna, the, the co-chair, and kind of move forward in that direction.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your...
Right, thank you. I assume we didn't talk about item five on the agenda, MBTA?
No, we did.
Oh, you did?
We got all the way through, so the next item is number seven.
Okay, seven, housing bond bill and accessory dwelling unit ADU regulations. Um, Peter, do you have any updates? Seems like you mentioned some.
Nothing, you know, just real quick, you know, I'm, I'm following it. All the planners are following it right now. Uh, actually, I think it's Tuesday. The state, um, unveiled a, um, ADU, uh, website, which I'm happy to send the link to for everybody. Um, I, today I signed up for a Mass Municipal Lawyers Association meeting on, uh, EDUs. Everyone's waiting to see what happens. Uh, there's been a lot of good questions brought up. What if a house is pre-existing, you know, conforming? Does it go to the zoning board of appeals? Um, X, Y, and Z. And so, uh, we're all kind of sitting here waiting, and I'm trying to go to every conference webinar there is.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe you mentioned something to me that Lisa Mead, who is deep into MBTA at the moment, but that she said, basically, this is being, in most communities, or, I don't wanna put words in her mouth, but it's kind of being put on hold a little bit until the regulations, the proposed regulations from the state come out, or are...
And speaking with other planners, you know, in the, in the area, um, and through Lisa, and obviously Lisa's working with all of her clients, that she's advising everybody, let's just hold tight, see where the regulations are, um, and then move forward once those regulations, you know, come out. I am mentally in preparing myself for a bylaw that we'll have to put together, uh, coming up to annual town meeting in May. Fundamentally, the, the ADU bylaw does not go into effect until February second, two thousand and twenty-five, which would have been a hundred and eighty days from the signature of the law. Uh, but with that said, rules should be able to come out. Will take some time, and we can get a bylaw that's good, that understands the regulations, how it's gonna be presented and implemented, and then we can get that for annual town meeting. So that is the cue that I am taking from Lisa, um, on how to move forward and how to proceed. And I think it is the right cue. I think we should not, you know, I think we should all understand it before we come up with rules and regulations. And it's tough to come up with rules and regulations if the state hasn't done their best, and so, um, with that said...
But so the question is, so the law was signed by the governor, right? So while the regulations are passed, what happens if somebody just files for a building permit?
So if you file for a building permit today, um, it wouldn't be approved.
Oh, you can hold it until the regulations...
So February?
I would hold it.
No, no. If it's February twenty-nine, twenty-eight, or the...
If February third, you came in with a building permit, I mean, filing for a building permit, March first. Good point. As long as that applied to all the regulations within the law, right? This, under the square footage, in the back, you know, in the rear yard, uh, whatever those regulations were, off the top of my head, then yes.
It would have to be approved.
We would have to be approved. We have to be approved. However, and I believe the regulations will be probably released somewhere between Thanksgiving and Christmas, which doesn't give everybody a large amount of time, right? I think this is one, my take on is, it wasn't, you know, they should have at least given us a full, planners or indoor towns, a full town meeting season to adopt, right? But yeah, there is gonna be a couple of months where in lim- not in limbo, where the bylaws at the time are gonna be the rules and the regulations within the act, until all the other communities can just understand the regulations of the state and proceed, uh, at annual town meeting. That's what I'm ta- picking up from planners and, and attorneys. I believe, you know, I think in next two weeks, I'm gonna go to the, like I said, the Mass Municipal. Who is presenting at this is, is Maura Healy. Maura Healy, um, not the governor, is actually in charge of, uh, all Mass Municipal law, um, in reviewing all Mass Municipal, all town bylaws. Um, she regularly presents at the CTP, um, which Anna or Kate, and I know, Tricia, you attended, uh, the last couple of years out at Holy Cross. Uh, but with that said, that's what everyone's waiting for. We're all kind of seeing what happens.
Is that, any other questions on that? Okay. All right, so, um, it is nine o'clock, um, and, uh, the discussion review of retreat items. I wanna make sure that we don't just load up our schedule with, I wanna make sure there's things we actually wanna discuss instead of forcing in discussion items. So, but is there anything that is, that we should be looking at on that, at this, at this particular meeting?
So I, I think we, it was my fault, we a little bit did six and eight together earlier. But I just wanna bring up one thing about, so I think what's really helpful, if we can figure out a plan to have public, like, MBTA zoning, accessory dwelling unit, like, we're hearing about it, and I think we're being good publishing it. But this, if you take, um, six weeks back from May, and this comes out in February, let's just say we don't know anything, there's very little time to, like, react. But if we're telling people now, we're gonna be reacting, we'd like to hit spring twenty-five town meeting, I think that's super helpful, right? So getting some of our more active things on the list, like, just in front of the public in that way.
Yeah, I mean, so MBTA, obviously, I'm sure people have been saying it, we've been pretty clear about it in the town newsletter, right? The, that Michael, town manager's newsletter that Michael puts out, um, and also advertising on the Facebook page and things like that.
Yeah.
So is that like, like, just to kind of, I mean, under planning board to have, that these are things that we're discussing?
Yeah, I think it'd be awesome, because you're, what happens is, where did this come from? I didn't hear. I know you say, but like, people are gonna do that, and we're trying to prevent that, the more it's out there. And maybe people have good ideas, and maybe the people that thought about it the most are gonna show up when we do have those hearings, right?
So maybe we can look at putting that in next week's, um, next week's town manager's newsletter about ADUs, about, about how the planning board is starting to discuss changes in the bylaws to EDUs based on state laws.
Well, and I, I think ideally would be, we'd like to see spring town meeting, right?
Oh, so, yeah, so a goal.
It's gonna be ADU, it's gonna be this change that two ti- our timelines match of special permit and, um, and, uh, site plan review. There's probably a couple others, but now it's like, we've been talking about it for a whole year, right? Those things, because there, there's gonna be probably quite a few at spring.
I'm just going back a little bit, because like, you mentioned ADUs, but then you mentioned some, like...
That's, that's one that we want, probably the spring, site plan review timelines updated to be the same as special permit timelines. That's quite likely we'd like to have that at spring town meeting.
I think what it makes sense, Kate, and I, I see where you're going, is, is to start, maybe it's not in a, in a, you know, maybe it's on next week or the week after, but we put the story together.
Yeah.
You know, maybe in, in, in sight, these are the goal, maybe some goals of the planning board are these three items. Please be aware, the planning board is working on the upcoming ADU bylaw. We're looking to, we're gonna adopt a new floodplain for the Charles River watershed, and we're gonna try to do a, a small correction to the site plan review regarding timeline.
And others, if everything evaporates and we have more time, but at least those we know are happening, or likely.
Can you put that, can you put that in a little email and send it to Peter and I?
Sure.
We don't, so there's a kind of a record and a little bit of a wording on it. Thank you.
Do you want the fan, do you want me to put the fans on?
No, it just, it started blowing, and I was like, this is a weird ball.
No, it just, it started blowing, and I was like, this is a miracle.
Yeah.
She's got six weeks to go.
Oh, boy.
How are you feeling?
Why does she look so happy all of a sudden?
I'm like, what's going on? I was a lifeguard.
All right, so we are then at reports from board members and town planner. There's a long list here, oh, so let's do reports from, about the various... List number nine, because I have a few things in there, but first is comprehensive plans on the top of the list. Anything from comprehensive plan?
Yeah, so I think the, the public survey about the current, where, so we've, we have a draft vision, draft core themes, and strategies we're working on, not goals. So there's, so what this is, we took all the public comment survey with the consultant. The group selected what we think we heard, and this is the chance to say, yeah, I like it, I don't like it, I think you heard. And we were, we've been told over and over, the consultants are great, this is iterative, so it's not the one... We might pick up through the process, something else that we like better. So that's still open, but it's really important. It's open for about a month. It just, just opened today, so people will be on the lookout. I assume that the, it'll be published every way we can publish things. And then it's this week at the select, this coming week at the Select Board meeting on the 18th, correct? The consultant?
Yes, so...
Will be there.
We do not have a Planning Board meeting next week, but we do need to attend the Select Board meeting because there'll be both comprehensive plan discussed and then MBTA discussed at that meeting, so if people can be there.
Are we first under?
I'll try to be there again.
Marcelo showed up last night for the Select Board meeting. He's very dedicated.
I think I thought it was last week.
Well, it was originally...
It was originally.
And Randy, and she was like, we're not doing that anymore.
It was originally scheduled for September 4th. We did talk about that, but it wasn't ready in time, so it got changed to the Select Board meeting on the 18th.
Marcelo, you're just aggressively attending Select Board meetings.
I guess I'm a little over ambitious there.
So next week is kind of an important, it's the end of phase to a report to the Planning Board and Select Board, specifically, obviously, the public. And then the comprehensive plan will be at Ashland Day, obviously asking questions or getting survey. And then I think a really important thing, one last thing coming up, is that it's, I think it's actually going to be in like November, but each of our themes will have a working session with the professional representative of the consultant, and those are groups of 16 to 20 specialists in the topic. So we're meeting, the comprehensive plans meeting this week, so kind of our plan to recruit. It was specifically said it really shouldn't be the same people.
Wait, when is our comprehensive plan meeting?
This coming week. Well, today's already Thursday, a week from today.
Oh, boy. Okay. Thank you for reminding me.
So that meeting, I'm just putting it out there for, we, so that's five groups times 20 new people, important and very important, that, that will be reviewing like strategies for the goals. And I think that's going to take a big effort, and, and it's a great opportunity to get more public, so that's it. Thank you.
That's a lot, really. Okay, Design Review Committee, you had said, and maybe that you had reached out, is that what I heard you say?
I did. You, we chatted about delegating to me the reach out to them to understand their agenda, if you will. And so I reached out to them, and I believe Monday at 8:00 is when I'm meeting with them.
Great. Thank you for doing that.
I'm realizing I have a meeting for the town three days next week. Thank you for reminding me, Kate.
So Sustainability Committee, I think we, I think I came in right as people were kind of mentioning that, maybe because it was on the retreat items, but several things involving...
I still, I kind of, when we came to the retreat, I tried to reach out and I haven't, so I kind of let that, MBTA is obviously priority.
And it's kind of about the tree bylaw and anything else that might be on there?
Yeah, I mean, I can reach out again if people want, or just wait till we get through MBTA, maybe MBTA zoning.
That's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I would probably wait myself.
It, it's okay to, it's okay to reach out and said, hey, you know, when, when you're discussing it and you want us, let us know. But, but we don't need to probably push it until we get this taken care of.
I think that was their plan anyway.
Yeah, okay, yep. Okay, CPC, we did have a CPC, they were kind of on a big summer break, but we did have a CPC meeting earlier this week, one of the evenings, and we approved some money for a study for the Washegan Pond in, along Pond Street, which I'm sure Kate knows about, has been kind of over... Kate's Pond, we'll call it.
Hopefully more viable than Anna's Hotel.
I hadn't heard that one. Hotel Anna, I like it.
Marcelo knows what we're talking about.
But I think the pond has been having some pretty serious issues with vegetative growth and bacteria, all the things that we keep hearing about why you can't swim in various water bodies. It's been closed, I think, all summer, like, yeah, yeah. So 25% of it is kind of in Ashland, and 75% is in Framingham. A member of the Framingham Conservation Commission, no, Conservation Commission or CPC? Now I don't remember which one, but joined us for the CPC meeting. And so they, Framingham has already approved their share, which is the 75% of the money for the study. And the Ashland CPC has approved our 25%, that is, that's something that goes to town meeting, as you know. So to, to put towards a study to see if that pond, how best to address the issues that are happening with that pond. To remediate, yeah, 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 so, so that was kind of a good thing. And Becca Solomon, the Conservation Commission agent, was the one who presented it to the CPC. We gave her, you know, she was given an A++ for homework, like she had her ducks in a row, so. Okay, we'll work hard at it then, okay. But just, just so you know, that's just the relationship with the CPC. Metro West Regional Collaborative?
They're still on summer break. First meeting's end of September.
Okay. And the MBTA Working Group, we met on Monday. Yeah, we met on Monday to discuss a little bit the forum that we had. You know, I think, I think it went well. People asked a lot of good questions. We answered them as best we could. But I don't think there was any real, real feedback or strong, like, we don't like this, but we do like this, or we'd rather you do this. I think it was just more, I mean, it wasn't that different than our previous obvious plan, but... So, you know, we took that, and we're going to have a second forum on this, on Monday, right? Is Monday the 16th?
Yeah, Monday the 16th at 7:00 via Zoom.
Yeah, which we kind of, we'll be kind of just the same thing. We'll present the, we'll explain, as if it's a whole new audience, which, because we don't know, we'll explain the MBTA regulations, we'll explain our work, we'll explain what we're proposing, and open it up for questions and feedback, you know, so.
I have a question. So are you, like, I, I agree, because there might be new people, and we have to get as many people educated before a town meeting. But I did hear feedback, I, I heard feedback, and I feel like, I mean, it's nice to say what I did with your feedback, and it might be simply like, it was in keeping with, but I feel like it was a little more detailed than that, so people can feel heard.
Yeah, obviously, I'm kind of summarizing an hour and a half meeting, you know. But, but yeah, you mean, so in the next meeting?
In the next meeting, yes.
We can say, hey, this is some of the feedback we got back last time, and then, is that, is that what you mean?
I feel like that's really important.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah. We can, we can definitely do that. So that'll be our second forum, and then we'll be talking about it, obviously, on Wednesday with the Select Board, at least, at least that's the plan. I assume, well, I, I would say hopefully, maybe we will then be able to take a vote of the two committees to see if the plan is acceptable. If, if it doesn't work, then if we need to tweak it, we still have the Monday of the 23rd, which is the, supposed to be more the, just, it's not supposed to be for that purpose, but we can use it partially for MBTA if we need to.
One thing I wanted to tell you, because you were not here when we discussed the MBTA zoning, is we had quite a heated, no, I know it was hot, discussion about the importance of having opportunities for the public to speak. And we discussed how that meeting with the Select Board would likely have a public comment, so that the public could communicate to us. So I just wanted to make sure, since you're chair...
Communicate to Alonda, that we would like public comment to be, okay.
Is that an accurate summary? Okay.
Yep, that's fine. Okay. That's that. Reports on planning topics.
I can just jump in. Yeah, the biggest thing is economic impact tools. So we, we went, Alvaro, we, we kind of restarted our conversation again. Framingham State's back in, you know, school, and so the professor that we were dealing in or working with, or communicating with regarding the development of economic impact tools is in contact with us today. Alvaro sent them a bunch of information, so I think hopefully he's starting to look at the data that we're sending him and digging into it, and maybe making sure, you know, kind of to see if a project can get off the ground in partnership with Framingham State. So we continue to open that, have that open line of communication back and forth.
Okay.
Moving on to number 11, Planning Office Updates. First and foremost, Whitmore Estates, definitive subdivision. I know this has been on the agenda for a long time, and we have received a couple of emails about it. I do need to tell everybody that this is on the forefront of my day-to-day. It is on the forefront of Michael Herbert's day-to-day. Michael spoke to the developer of this subdivision, Steve Ross, within the last week. We are pushing them to finish the subdivision. We are coming to agreements on what can be done, how it can be done, and it needs to be done to the subdivision standards and what was approved by the Planning Board in 2016. I was on the phone today with the, with the contractor. But when we receive emails, please know that I am dealing with this on a day-to-day basis in the office.
And is that still going through, through legal lawsuit?
Lisa Mead, we have, yes, we have legal counsel looking at this, conservation agents on this. We are all working on this together as a team, and we're trying to do the best that we can.
But at the moment, the residents, the residents there have not had relief on the problems that they had, or there's something has been done?
Nope, they're still working. The developer is still working, they're saying he's going to do it. We had confirmation he was going to do, he's going to do it. Things like this happen from time to time. This is not the first time it's happened in Ashland. It's not the first time I've ever had to deal with it. But yes, we are dealing with it on, and we're trying to take care of it as, as quickly as possible.
But since the time that we discussed this before, has, has actual work been done on the site?
Work was done last, work was done leading up to last winter. We were in a good place coming out of the spring, coming into the spring. However, we're still working on details between the two parties. So I just wanted to make a note to that. Hundred Chestnut Street, we did talk about, so I'm going to skip over. I have no update on 501 Pond Street, besides the fact that I did email the applicant to see what, you know, how everything was going and what his next move was, his permit...
Time is running out.
His permit does expire. I think it's December 22nd of 2024, which is only a few months away. I said, he's going to give us, you know, we, we want to know, is this going to happen? Are you going to request extension? What's happening? And so that email went out, I believe, last week, and I have not received a response. However, I am not going to, I, I, I'm following up with that. I have no, obviously, nothing really on the other two. Besides, well, 12 Pond Street, I did meet with the developer out there, Charlie Zamuto, and we did go over implementation of the sidewalks. And he stated that he's going to, that's on his to-do list this fall, since Mast D O T has completed the sidewalks in front of his building. So hopefully, we see some, some movement out there. There is one item, which I didn't realize, which is not on this, but it does deal with the 501 Main Street property, and it is the, the fire station. Do you mind if I go into greater detail?
No, that's not 501 though, is it?
I'm sorry, 151.
151.
Yeah, and so just from the Planning Board's standpoint, John Meldun, the applicant, he did come to me the other day, and he, if you, if you remember on, and I can bring up an image on the approved plans, but on the approved plans, there was this concrete wall in the front of the building he's building out. On the approved plans, he has a raw concrete wall. What he is proposing is to put a, this is a sample piece, so this is about three feet, and this is the picture. So what he looking, he is looking to do is to upgrade that, can I call it a facade? That wall, that, that poor concrete wall with the, with the cinder blocks on top. He's looking to upgrade that facade of that wall with a, I'm going to call it a stone veneer. I believe this is an upgrade, but I do want to just update the board. I believe this is minor.
We can't, you guys, we can't discuss it. It's not on the agenda. It would be a public meeting violation, just out there. I, I don't want to get pinged by anyone.
Yeah, but agenda items, it doesn't include things that we can't expect, so this just happened.
Right, but what I mean is, let's not talk about it, because it just happened unexpectedly, and it's not on the agenda. Like, we can't comment on this. This should be on our agenda.
No, I believe we can come up, we can comment on things that come up, that, that can't be predicted, which this couldn't, and, and come up just unexpectedly, so. I, I believe, there's nothing, there's nothing we're doing about...
Yeah, I'm not going to do it.
There's no action item, right?
There's, there's no action item there.
There's no action item.
I, I don't think any, I mean, I, I...
Just an update.
Yeah.
Oh, an update is fine, but you started talking about what you believe, which is an opinion. And the second you do that, we're open to potential argument that is a public meeting violation. So I'm just stopping you and saying, I'm not comfortable discussing it. I, I understand Peter made a surprise update, but a discussion of it would be, I would, don't want to get in trouble.
Then do it. I just did it.
Yeah, I think, I think it's that, hey, Peter's showing us a prog, a progress shot of a, of a...
This is just a progress shot of a proposal to upgrade the front facade of the retaining wall.
But, 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 so, so is, is this going to come up to, to somebody's approval or something at some point, or is just an update of what they're doing?
I, I think it's just an update of, hey, look at, he's making it better than even we anticipated. And I'm like, great, stone is a high-ticket item.
Where's this picture taken from?
The sidewalk. Oh, looking at the building.
Oh, this is towards the building?
Towards the building, yeah, so the board, the building is up. It's that patio.
I just couldn't locate myself.
Yeah, so this is, as you would walk by, if you would be walking on the sidewalk along Main Street.
That's where they took it?
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
Got it.
So I think it's an upgrade, I think it would look better, and, yeah. Other than that, I have no other updates.
Okay, so is there anything else that people have that... Then I think we're on to Meeting Minutes Review.
Can I just comment that I will not attend the informal gathering with the Select Board on the 23rd, because I'll be out of the country. And the same thing for the 26th, the meeting we have on the 26th of September. Do we have any special permit projects that I'll be missing, because then attendance is an issue?
No, at this point, we have nothing.
Can we just avoid that, so we don't, if possible, if we can, if we don't get into deadline trouble? But if we, if I miss it, I miss it. I'm just letting everyone know.
I am not, I have no, nothing on my... I am not, I, I have no, nothing on my radar that's coming in, so, but I'm happy to do all I can to make sure I and you know what, by, by the time you receive an application, and by the time you send it out for public notice, and by the time you get in the newspaper for two weeks, it's a three to four week lag time, and so I don't believe.
It's not an issue.
I don't think it's, I think it's a non-issue, Anna.
Alright, so then I think we're on to, sorry, Meeting Minutes. Um, oh, I wasn't here this, the time I did watch, I did watch it, though. Guess the only correction I have is if you could correct the spelling of my name in line six.
Yep.
I had no corrections, just to comment that whoever's doing the minutes is still doing a great detailed job.
Yes.
I've never seen myself quoted as much. Uh, I couldn't remember anything that I supposedly did, but I trust that it's accurate.
Well, it's a girl dad. I'll fix that.
Do you want a motion?
Uh, if everyone's.
Is everybody good?
I think so.
I'll make a motion to approve the August eighth, twenty twenty-four minutes, as they are, with the addition of, excuse me, line seventy-seven?
Uh, yeah, it'd be edit on line six and a edit on line seventy-seven.
Second, and a roll call vote?
Anna Tesmeniski, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jurzak, aye.
And that'll have to be good, cause I was there. Well, I guess I can, I can say aye too, cause I did watch the meeting.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay, so, uh.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alright.
One second.
Twenty-nine.
Roll call vote?
Anna Tesmeniski, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jurzak, aye.
Amanda Hayes, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Alright, thanks, everybody.